Town Council meeting to order at 7:10. As we have been doing now, we have a virtual Pledge of Allegiance. So our good friend and neighbor Colin Francis has joined us this evening. Colin, do you want to tell everybody what pack and what den you're from?
Um, yeah, my troop is 363.
Excellent, here in Parker. So Colin, it's all yours if you'll ask us to stand and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, um, can everybody please rise? Um, I pledge allegiance, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To.
Thank you, Colin, appreciate that. All right, we will now continue on to special presentations. And I see interim director Glassburn is here from the cultural department to introduce us to some fine folks.
Yes, good evening, mayor and town council. Thanks for having myself here and some virtual friends here tonight. As you recall, we talked to you on January 4th or on the agenda. You reappointed five out of our nine cultural commissioners. It's because their term had expired. And we were fortunate that all five of them were willing and hopefully eager to serve another term. So tonight, though, especially for the new commissioners, wanted to give you a little bit more background about what the commission is, its purpose, how it started, and what the expectations are of the commissioners. And I'm also going to have Diane Roth, who is our current chairperson, on talking a few minutes about some of the bigger projects that the commission works on. And then she is going to introduce you to the other four members virtually. So you get a little bit of idea of who they are and what their background is and how that contributes to our commission and the work. So if you go ahead and change, I can't see what you've got up. Okay, next slide. So, yeah, actually, one more. I just went through the agenda. So some of you may remember, this is Parker in the 90s. Some, I was around for this and might recognize some of it, but it, back then, there was a lot that was different. One of those being that the population was just a little over 6,000 people at that time in the early 90s. But even back then, culture was really important to its citizens. So there was no Pace Center. What we know today is the Schoolhouse Building was still a church owned by United Methodist Church. Any cultural activities that the town did, they were offered through and run by the rec center. So that might have been just a few dance classes, a couple art classes here and there. Maybe we would do a production once a year, but we had no place to hold it. So it had to be in the Ponderosa High School Theater. Definitely nothing like we had today. But as the, as the population grew, so did the man, the demand for cultural. We had no cultural staff at that time really. But even back then, town council felt it was important. And it was town council that in 1992 established by ordinance, the Parker Cultural Commission. Since it's changed, since then, the name has changed to Cultural and Scientific Commission to point out that that's an area we want to focus on. Next slide, please. So back then, the primary purchase of the cultural commission was, and yet it still is today, all these years later, to foster, implement, and participate in providing opportunities for cultural and scientific experiences for the community of Parker. So all those years later, that, that purpose still has not changed. Now, back then, the cultural commission, they oversaw programs like Kids Culture, Paint the Picture, those were programs they came up with. They housed a touring group that came through every year called Missoula Children's Theater. And what's nice is they actually still come through every year this, even today, and teach kids about theater. The commission held concerts in O'Brien Park. They didn't have Discovery Park. They were the ones, because we had no development people. They helped source grants and find other sources of funding so that they could do these small programs. Now luckily, there was flexibility built into the commission so that it could grow as the demand for culture grew. Next slide, please. So today, the cultural commission still oversees many free programs. They've just grown. So you'll hear about those in a minute with Diane. But thanks to the, to their vision with the commission, support from you all, town council, hard work from town staff, and many, many other groups. We now have the Pace Center. We've got the Schoolhouse Theater, Historic Ruth Memorial Chapel, events at Discovery Park, and a very strong public art program. Today, we offer thousands of programs from concerts, classes, camps, lectures, rental events. In a non-pandemic year, we have hundreds of thousands of patrons that come through our doors. We earn revenue today, not from grants that they found, but through ticket revenue, from grants that we source. We have sponsors, members. And today, we have one of the most sought-after cultural programs in the state. So we've definitely come a long way since 1992, when this was founded. Next slide, please. So now that you know a little bit of the history of the, how the commission started, I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the, kind of the details of the commission, some of their work, their current roles and responsibilities. So this is all outlined in chapter 2.04 of the Town's Municipal Code, if you ever want to go back and read it. But I'll just highlight some of this, I'm not going to read all of it. But the town council appoints all of the commissioners. That is up to you. Currently, we have nine, but you can decide to make it smaller or bigger as you see fit. The chairperson is also appointed by the council. That happens every year. And right now, you get to determine the terms that they serve. Right now, the current term is two years for the regular commissioners. We stagger those so that they don't all expire at the same time. That's why you reappointed five of the nine. We are required by ordinance to hold at least four meetings during the year. We have been choosing to hold six because we have so much going on. They are published, the dates of them are published by the town clerk's office, and they are open to the public. Occasionally, we have people from the public attend, but it's pretty rare. But they are certainly invited to do so at any point. The meetings are recorded, so the minutes are then filed with the cultural staff. And we put them on the town's Parker Arts website so that any member of the public can see what's decided. Next slide, please. So as far as the duties of the commission, they serve in an advisory capacity to you, the town council. Now, that's typically kind of through the cultural staff, but ultimately as an advisory committee to you, the council. Their, their mission is to provide advocacy and leadership of the arts. So that's in every day, when they're out and about, just on their own personal business, when they're attending or overseeing, helping out at the events that we put on. But there, we hope that they are out there really talking about the benefits of the arts and gaining awareness for us. Now, they work with us, the cultural staff, on recommending a vision for our cultural and scientific activities. So I'll give you an example of that. In 2019, cultural staff worked with the commission, along with other partners of ours, creative partners, and members of the community were on this committee to create our strategic plan. So it was the cultural strategic plan that will take us through 2023. And that's what guides us today. So they do help create a vision. Next slide, please. So in talking about funding, how this works is that the commission does, as, as the commission, along with our staff, determine new projects or areas that they want to focus on and possibly spending money on, they work with us on the cultural staff to put together our overall cultural budget. So their projects are within that umbrella budget that we then, you know, as a town, present to you the overall budget. So the council is responsible for approving the budget that really trickles down to whatever the cultural commission might be working on. That budget, though, is administered, all of the expenses have to be approved by the cultural director and administered by us on the, on the staff. They can make recommendations on things they might, how they might want to spend it, if they're sitting on committees or have ideas for things. But they do not have the authority to expend those funds or to make any commitments towards spending or to enter into any contracts on our behalf. That is all done by the cultural staff with the approval of the cultural director. Uh, next slide, please. So now that I spent a little bit of time giving you some background on how it came about and what the roles and responsibilities are, I'd like to turn it over to Diane Roth. She is the chairperson, as I mentioned, of the Cultural and Scientific Commission. She has served on the commission in various capacities since 2013. She's been a huge advocate for just the arts in general in Parker, even before we existed, but specifically one of the biggest supporters of Parker Arts since we opened. So she'll tell you a little bit more about herself and her really interesting background. But first, she's going to take you through some of the projects and the committees that are part of the commission and then introduce you to those four other commissioners. So, thank you. Diane, are you on?
Okay, I just hit the button, I'm on now. Okay, and I just want to thank the council for having us on the agenda tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity. And before I go through the committees, I want to just quickly put them in perspective. The Cultural and Scientific Commission is kind of a unique commission to the town because our work isn't prescribed for us. We're not like the planning commission. We don't get a meeting packet, knowing what we're going to discuss and vote on. We actually, we create our own work, and the way we have done that is through our committees. And one of the principal goals of our committees is, as Carrie mentioned, is to plan and participate in the free programming offered by Parker Arts. And while staff assists with these efforts, the commissioners are very active, very hands-on in getting this work done. You also have a handout that gives you much more detail about the committees than I'm going to go into tonight. And I just want to point out that each, almost every committee has not only commissioners and cultural staff, but members of the public. And I think that's an important way to get the message out about Parker Arts. Okay, let's start with the first committee, the Free Adult Lecture Series. It started in 2015, and it just keeps continuing to get bigger and better. And the great thing about Zoom is that we've been able to continue adult lectures in 2021. And the lecture coming up in February is crowdsourcing coronavirus. And that's going to be given by a commissioner. He's the vice chair of the commission, Dr. Michael Edwards. And he is also chairs this, this committee. One of my favorite lectures, however, was last year. And it was on, it was put on by the Denver Art Museum, and it was an overview of the Winslow Homer and Frederick Remington art exhibit. And that was made possible by one of our other commissioners that you'll be meeting tonight, Janine Flores-Jackson, who works at the Denver Art Museum. Okay, let's move to the next committee. Art in Public Places. This committee makes recommendations to the town council on public art. And annually, this, this, this committee chooses these sculptures from the Douglas County Arts Encounters that are placed around town for about a year. And we normally get about six to, six to eight pieces. And so we're really looking forward to this program coming back in 2021 because it took a timeout in 2020. A sculpture that I want to point out is the sand crane, the cranes that are on the lower part of the screen, left-hand part of the screen. That was a Douglas County Art Encounter piece. And it, and people liked it so much that the town found a way to purchase that. And it's now in this, outside of the schoolhouse. The most recent piece of purchased public art that was managed by this committee in conjunction with the town are the balls and jacks that sit outside of Discovery Park, and that was done in 2016. And this committee is chaired by Janine Flores-Jackson, who you will meet tonight. She's one of our reappointed commissioners. Next, next one. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee is one of our newer committees. And it was formed to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion in everything that Parker Arts does. Their work includes partnering with experts to better understand and coordinate outreach to cultural groups, and also explore opportunities for new programming to promote inclusion. The slides that you are seeing were from two family free days. We did one in, in 2019, celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month. And then in February 2020, there was a celebration of Black History Month. And of course, the May event that was going to celebrate Asian Pacific heritage had to be canceled. And this committee is chaired by someone you will meet tonight, and that's Alexis Watts. The History Committee. This committee seeks to preserve Parker's history and make it accessible to the public. Working in conjunction with the Parker Area Historical Society, the 2019 walking tours of downtown Parker were extremely popular and attracted so many people that we had to start using sign-up genias to limit the size of the group. And unfortunately, we did have to cancel those walking tours for the summer of 2020. We hope to bring them back again. And this committee, again, works very closely with the Parker Area Historical Society. And our next one. This is the Honey Festival. The Honey Festival produces an annual free outdoor event to educate the community about the importance of honeybees and other pollinators. So I've often been asked, why does Parker have a honey festival? Well, in 2007, the Cultural and Scientific Commission was working on getting a grant from the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District. And they needed a scientific component in their programming, so they turned to beekeeping. Therefore, we have a honey festival. The good news is we were able to proceed with this event in 2020, in August of 2020. We moved it from O'Brien Park over to the Schoolhouse Plaza, and it became an extension of the, of the farmer's market. And we were able to follow the permit from Tri-County Health Guidelines and putting on the festival. And I, we're thinking we're going to do it again in 2021, just, just to be safe. And the festival is always held the first Sunday in August and is always very well-intended. And we did change the name of it since it's now part of the, an extension of the farmer's market. We now call it the Honey Stop. And I chair this committee. And we have a really good partnership with the local Beekeeping Club, Southeast Beekeepers. To the next one. The Parker Quest Committee. This committee produces the free outdoor annual event where participants get a map and they walk to historical buildings and historical locations around Parker. And then there's a scripted volunteer at each stop. For example, I was stationed at the 20-mile marker in O'Brien Park, and I had my spiel ready for every group that came, came by. And the cultural staff worked hard to obtain a permit from Tri-County Health that would enable us to put on this event. And we could do so safely by staggering the walking groups, eliminating to households, and then requiring masks and social distancing. And we had sign up, had to sign up in advance, and our slots filled very, very quickly. I believe the community really appreciated having something fun to do on a Saturday morning in September. Moving to Program Advisory. This committee serves in an advisory capacity to help the cultural department plan its presented season of programming. So they make recommendations concerning the genres and the performers for the season. And I think they have a lot of fun doing it because a lot of people want to be on this committee. And let's move to Science Day. Now, this is our newest committee, and this will be the first time event for Parker. This committee is working on plans to prevent our first outdoor science fair aimed at engaging elementary students in science. And this event is planned to take place at Discovery Park and include live science demonstrations and interactive vendor booths. So it should be a lot of fun. We're looking forward to doing this. And we're working with another group that's also, it's also an CFD group. It's a tier-three group, and that's the Council of Arts, Science, and Culture. So that's a rundown on our committee structure. And most of our work gets done outside of our regular commission meetings in these, in committee meetings. So now I would like to introduce you to the, well, I'll introduce myself again and the four commissioners that were reappointed at your meeting on the, on January 4th. And I think it really speaks to the commitment of these individuals that they all sought reappointment and are entering their second terms. So I will just start, Carrie told you a little bit about how long I've been on the commission. But I was also on the commission when it was a very different commission before we had cultural staff in the early 90s, when I first moved to Parker. In terms of my background, I have a bit of an arts background from college. But professionally, I retired from AT&amp;T as the Director of Government Affairs in 2004. And then I worked as a contract lobbyist at the State House until 2011. I'm also a board member and an active volunteer at the Parker Task Force. And in addition to the Honey Festival Committee, I'm part of the History and Parker Quest Committees. So now I would like to introduce you to Annie Day. And Annie, if you can unmute yourself, that would be great. And I just want to say Annie is one of the most energetic people I have ever met.
Well, thanks Diane. So I'm obviously Annie Day. I'm a new commissioner in 2020, and I have been so lucky to be a part of this commission. We're really doing awesome things here in Parker. I'm a recent history grad. I have two little girls. The thing that really drew me to being a part of this commission is I have a real passion for community. And I have a passion for Parker because of how many people feel connected to our community because of the kind of events, like the ones we put on through the commission. I'm on a couple of the different committees. I'm on the Lecture Series Committee. I just work with them on programming. So we talk about different speakers and who to highlight, and then what people really want from, from these lectures and how we can serve the community in that way. I am on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee with Alexis. She is just so incredible, and we are just working to make Parker a more inclusive town, something that I think that we all want. Um, I was lucky enough to be on the Honey Festival Committee as well, Diane. And we got to do some crafts for the kids and to just engage the public and, and let them know about what, what we're doing with our committee and, and to educate them about honeybees and really engage, especially with children. And for me as a mother, that was so incredible to engage with them. I am on the Historical Commission as well. We did the Parker Quest this last year, and it was just amazing. This has been such a hard year, not being able to engage. And I feel like in our commission, we've really been able to find ways to engage with the public in, in these incredible capacities. And the Parker Quest and the Honey Festival are both awesome examples, well, all of these things, lectures as well, are both awesome examples of ways that we're able to reach out to the community and, and enrich the lives of people in Parker, which is exactly what we're trying to do. I just feel lucky to be on this commission, and I think it's been so awesome. And I just, I just feel lucky to help, so, thanks.
Thank you, Annie. Okay, next, Lisa Hens. And I guess the thing I'll say about Lisa is she's the epitome of professionalism, and I think you'll all agree with me when, after we've heard from Lisa.
Thanks Diane. That's a lot of pressure, by the way. It's an honor to be here again, Lisa Hens. And my background is marketing, communications, as well as talent and leadership development. And background-wise, tune-wise, I love the art. I've lived in Omaha for many years. I was a member of the Nebraska Film Group there, as well as an actor. And so I've always had an appreciation for the importance of having a strong art program within the community and what it does for that. So I'm serving on the Programming Advisory Committee, which has been a great experience for me. And I have a true appreciation for what these types of organizations go through in choosing and budgeting and everything. And then, of course, going through the year that we did in 2020, even more of an appreciation for the amazing stuff that you guys have. So it's an honor to be here, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, and Janine Flores-Jackson. And I think what I'll say about Janine is that her perspective and experience, experience, what she offers and her meaning is always valuable to our group. Janine?
Thank you Diane. Hi, I'm Janine Jackson. I am an art lover, I'm basically a lifer for arts. I just, I just love it. I've been, all my professional background has been in the arts, in mostly cultural organizations, in San Diego, Florida, and now here. I am also a fundraiser. I fundraised for the Denver Museum, and I was so glad to hear that the Hens' favorite program last year was the one that I helped connect with. So I am also the Chair of the Arts in Public Places. The main reason I decided to join that committee and chair is because I do believe the arts really make a town really special. And one of the draws for moving in, in the area really was how, how great the arts program and how much attention the arts was receiving here in Parker. It really is a special town. So with that, I'm, I'm just a strong advocate. I, I tell everyone that, you know, the arts matter and it should be supported, and people should get involved. So it was a natural fit for me.
Thank you, Janine. And last but not least is Alexis Watts. And Alexis is another one of those energetic individuals who just dives into wherever she's, dives into whatever she needs to be done. Alexis?
Thank you Diane, and good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity for all of us to come in front of you. Been through Zoom, that's okay. But really excited to be on this commission, be reappointed. Moved here June 2019 with my husband and fell in love with the town of Parker. And I just immediately wanted to get involved in, to be honest, where I live. Very close to home is where the Pace Center is, it's been great. Really, right now, what I'm doing, since I've actually started the commission, I am now the Director of Marketing at Town Center at Aurora, which has given me such great opportunity to really grow with diversity and inclusion and to bring great opportunities back here to Parker and with the Parker Art Center, working closely with the city of Aurora in the Immigration International Affairs Office, the Aurora History Museum, and then planning a lot of cultural events at Town Center at Aurora. And then I'm able to bring that back here to Parker and just to bring such great ideas of different programs and activities that we can do as a group. And really, just to help, again, just bring that fun culture from all over here in our lovely, small, I call it small town still, small town of Parker. Again, this is still new for us, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. However, been working closely with the Parker Arts team. They are amazing, they are great. And then also just starting the committee out, like Annie was saying, we're just excited to get started this year and really build on, onto it. So thank you again for this opportunity.
Thanks Alexis. And that's five of the Parker's Cultural and Scientific Commission members. Thank you again.
Thanks Diane. And thank you for allowing this time. I know we went a little bit over, but as you can see, unlike some other commissions where you have to beg and plead and come join our commission, we have very excited, enthusiastic, passionate people. And we feel very lucky that they choose to, to help us out. And hopefully you got some of that enthusiasm. So that's all we had tonight. Any questions?
Fantastic, let's see if there's any questions.
Can we make a comment?
Absolutely, I'm gonna start with Todd. I'm gonna start with former commissioner of Cultural and Science.
Yes, Todd knows what it's like to be on our commission.
So for all those enthusiastic people on that call, there's a path forward for you too.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I was a commissioner in the past, and I know the importance of Parker Arts and is a vital cog for the community. And I just want to thank everyone for stepping up to volunteer.
Sure.
Yeah, I appreciate you spending some time with us tonight. You know, we sit up here, but we very seldom get to meet you. And it's really exciting for me to be able to reach out to the people in our community who is stepping up to do all this great work, so thank you.
Laura?
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you again for the presentation. As a new council member, it really helps us understand the perspective, your perspective, and what you bring to the town. And again, a special thanks to the New Science Festival and the Honey Festival. This is a growing town with small This is a growing town with small children and, uh, look forward to attending that. And I know a lot of folks in the town are really gonna enjoy those this summer with their children. Thank you.
Great. Uh, Councilman Diak, any questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, being a, uh, a cultural liaison, I did the Cultural Commission for the last eight years. Some of the faces have changed, but really the intensity and passion that those people have, uh, have endured and we have benefited as citizens. So, uh, to me, uh, I know there's an action item, uh, on, on the agenda tonight. But I will work with Chair Roth if, uh, if she needs me to, uh, to be a part of those meetings, um, in the future. I'm happy to do so. So again, thank you to all for, uh, for serving the town. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, and just to add to that, John, well put. Uh, thank you Diane. Thank you for your leadership. It's, it's extended and, and you know, that commission exists because of you and your leadership and we appreciate that very much. But the, uh, the energy and the enthusiasm is palpable. So thank you all for giving up your time and your talents to do what you love to do. That's probably the biggest blessing in life is to get to do what you love to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Carrie. All right. Before we move on, I just want to set the record straight that all council members are present. Councilman Diak is joining us remote, but we do have a quorum here tonight. So we will move on to public comments. Uh, let's see, public comments for items that are not on the agenda will be addressed in a manner provided by the Town Administrator's Emergency Order Number Eight Dash Twenty Twenty. And that is that public comments are accepted into the town's clerk until five o'clock prior to the meeting. At this point, we have received two public comments. Those will be added to tonight's minutes and you will see those online. There's nothing else. We'll move on to reports, items and comments from the mayor and council. We'll start with Todd.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just going through orientation as a new council member and also had the pleasure of interviewing, uh, some returning special licensing authority appointees and new alternates with, uh, Councilmember Pogue. Um, that's it.
Cheryl?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, interviews with the Special Licensing Authority was fantastic. I'm so thrilled that we did it and I'm very appreciative of the staff. They got it put together in a very short amount of time. But the input we got from the returning members was invaluable. And it was nice to see, um, the new people coming on. So thank you.
Excellent. Laura?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, as, uh, Councilman Hendricks stated, we did have some great training today from the Community Development Department. So thank you very much as we continue our orientation till March. And also want to thank the mayor for, um, now making the liaison, uh, positions, um, known to us. And, uh, we will, uh, be assigned, we're assigned to those and we will be starting those here in February, as I understand it right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes ma'am, as soon as they get ready for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. John Diak?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you started off, um, with, uh, attending alongside of yourself, the Douglas County Commissioners swearing in. Commissioners Thomas and Commissioners Teal, congratulations. Commissioner Thomas has a second four-year term and Commissioner Teal is, uh, is the new member of our, uh, community, or county triumvirate. E four seventy, we had a business meeting. Uh, we addressed a engineering and roadway maintenance, uh, department request from Adams County to connect E four seventy's High Plains Trail into their Riverdale Bluffs open space. Had a great discussion on that. Uh, we also have board officer nominations and elections. Uh, I, I was elected to the role of Vice Chair, uh, I guess the the next progression, I, uh, I could become Chair in a year, but that's, that, that will be discussed. Uh, I, I was also, had some various transportation related calls on various Douglas County projects. And, uh, one item getting back to E four seventy, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was asked, uh, by the E four seventy board, uh, to, uh, to ask the council as well as the mayor to consider writing a letter to support two of my previous actions. We, we had a, um, a group, uh, the Brodus, uh, reject, or I'm sorry, uh, provide a proposal to E four seventy, uh, both on August eighth of two thousand and nineteen and June eleventh of two thousand and twenty. I, as the Parker representative, voted to, uh, uh, to reject unsolicited proposals. The, the board would like a letter, uh, from, uh, from the mayor on town letterhead. I have, um, reviewed this, uh, in brief with, uh, most of the council members individually. Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, I will leave it to you, uh, to, to gain, uh, gain direction and consensus so we can potentially, uh, resolve this action at the request of the E four seventy board, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. John, anything else for you?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Thank you. So before, before we move on, and I believe John has, has briefed you all on the, on the deal with E four seventy. Does anyone have any, uh, concerns about signing a letter under my name to, in support of John's former actions?
No.
Great. Thank you, John. All right. And for me, I attended also the swearing in of a new Commissioner Teal and, uh, the, the, uh, swearing in for her second term of Laura Thomas along with John Diak. So I appreciate being there. Uh, attended the Downtown Business Alliance last Wednesday. They are, uh, doing some great things there. They're getting some new board members, including, uh, someone known to all of us, Shelley Mango is coming back on their board, which is exciting. Also, they presented awards at that meeting and, uh, former council member Rivera and former Councilman, um, Lewis received awards from the Downtown Business Alliance. That was nice. Also attended the Chamber Board Retreat on Friday. Um, congratulations again to Omar Castillo as he, uh, departs and becomes Chairman Emeritus of the Board. Uh, but also to, uh, Brian Taylor, local attorney down on Main Street as he, uh, uh, ups for a year and, um, looking forward to working with him. Um, also had a chance this week to meet with the CEO of Parker Adventist Hospital to, uh, start what will be a monthly, uh, meeting with them just to find out what's going on at the hospital, how we can help, how the community can help. Um, I've been on multiple tri-county health calls all week and last week, as well as completing the liaison assignments, which you should all have. So, uh, if you have any complaints on those, see Michelle on that because she, she helped out. So anyways, thank you all for those comments. Moving on to item number five, the Town Administrator's Report. We have a beautiful Town Administrator's Report for the winter of two thousand and twenty-one. Michelle, anything to add to that report?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Not even why it's a straight blade and not a V blade?
I'll let Councilmember Pogue, which works that.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Consent Agenda. Number six, consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one motion only. There will be no separate discussion on the consent agenda item unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. Consent agenda items discussed at study session can be viewed by clicking the following link if you go online to the agenda. And just for reference, just to set everybody, um, as a reference point, we have started to review, um, contracts over a hundred thousand dollars at our study sessions, uh, every other week so that council is aware, can ask questions, et cetera, before they're on the consent agenda. So items on the consent agenda have been discussed at study sessions, et cetera. We do have an item number seven, which is contracts over a hundred thousand. Those have not been addressed to the study session. So Jim Gilbert, after we go through the consent agenda, uh, Jim Gilbert's gonna take a chance to, uh, present those to us, answer any questions, and then number seven will be treated as another consent agenda item and, um, approved with one motion. So I will, if there's no questions, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda, item number six.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Nice second.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. And I believe we are going to do, uh, votes on your screen. Yep. Do you need a roll call? Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogue? Councilmember Diak?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four zero. Item number seven. Oh, there it is. Item number seven, contracts over a hundred thousand. Mr. Gilbert, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Uh, tonight I want to present, uh, several contracts regarding our two thousand and twenty-one fleet replacement and capital purchases. The items that I'm presenting are, are for contracts in excess of a hundred thousand dollars and will include both fleet replacements as well as a couple of additions to our fleet. Excellent. Um, so tonight, what, what we'll be talking about are fleet pickup trucks, large Class Eight heavy duty cab and chassis units along with their upfits. Fleet pickups and police vehicles. A seventy-foot aerial boom truck, um, vehicle outfit and several pieces of construction type equipment and machinery. All of these contracts we will review tonight have been awarded through competitive bid process. The town has successfully used these types of bid processes in the past. And we use multiple sources for these competitive bid processes, including neighboring municipal agencies such as Arapahoe County, the state of Colorado. We use nationally recognized solicitation agencies such as MAPO or the Multiple Agency, I'm sorry, Multiple Assembly of Procurement Officials and SWARSWELL, formerly known as the National Joint, uh, Powers Alliance. These solicitations have proven to be very helpful and competitive bid outcome for the town of Parker. As the mayor indicated, um, I wasn't sure how we were gonna proceed, if we were gonna do these one at a time, but
Yep, we're gonna go all through.
Go all the way through and, and we'll, uh, we'll do this at the end. So thank you. So the first contract for this evening, uh, addresses pickup trunks, pickup trucks with dump bodies. Next slide, please. Parker's financial and budget policy include provisions for the town to acquire goods and services using contracts based on competitive solicitations received by other government agencies. The state of Colorado issued an award to Corf Continental for the purchase of two thousand and twenty-one model year vehicles, which includes various vehicle makes and models. The vehicles specified are included in this award and reflect a competitive bid price, defined options and required minimum service requirements. Tonight, we're talking about two vehicles. One's in addition to the fleet for the stormwater and the other one is a replacement unit for our Parks Department. The stormwater capital is a one and one half ton pickup extended cab with dump body with a total cost of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and two hundred and sixty-four dollars, excuse me. The addition of this five fifty class truck with dump body to, will provide maintenance of over three hundred and nineteen detention ponds and over twenty-five miles of major drainage way in the town. As part of the stormwater operations, maintenance includes sediment removal as well as large amounts of trash and heavy vegetation removal. This truck will allow access to areas that standard dump truck cannot access, allowing for complete removal of sediment, trash and vegetation efficiently and with minimal damage to equipment or stormwater assets. These functions prevent flooding and overgrown choke drainage channels and ponds. Removed material must be hauled away from the work site, stockpiled and dried before disposal within a landfill. The smaller truck is more versatile in the use and operation, allowing work to continue throughout the year and during wet periods, which may prevent a larger standard truck from operating. The second vehicle is a one and one half ton pickup, single cab with dumpster landscape body. Total cost for this vehicle is sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. This is replacing a two thousand and four landscape body dump truck. The existing vehicle had an initial life expectancy of twelve years, but now is approaching seventeen years of age. The lifetime maintenance cost and repair for this exceeds sixteen thousand dollars. One component for the consideration in a life cycle analysis for vehicle replacement is the technical, technological life expectancy. With a seventeen-year-old vehicle, parts, replacement parts for this vehicle are on, almost non-existent at this time. And part of the issue that we're having is when we do have a breakdown, it usually extends the downtime of that vehicle for repairs to be made. Next slide, please. The next item, uh, contract is for, uh, two vehicles, a single, one single and one tandem axle cab and chassis. These are through Mechanus International Truck Center, um, and both of these units are considered Class Eight heavy duty vehicles. Next slide. The Fleet Division is requesting the authority to purchase two Class Eight heavy duty cab and chassis units. One unit will be in addition to the fleet and the second will be a replacement unit. These units serve two different functions under being recommended for purchase. Both units were identified that through the two thousand and twenty-one capital expense review process and approved through the twenty, in the twenty-one, excuse me, and approved in the two thousand and twenty-one budget by council. These purchases are being made through a Colorado Department of Transportation competitive bid contract. The first unit is the additional unit and this unit, um, is being outfitted as a snow plow piece of equipment. The town is solely, is the sole entity responsible for plowing snow from town-owned and operates streets as well as performing repair and replacement of asphalt and concrete assets associated with the streets to provide reliable infrastructure and an effective mobility. It is estimated that between two thousand and twenty and two thousand and thirty, the town will add an additional four thousand homes, which will add to the current street infrastructure requiring maintenance and plowing. The town currently has fourteen plow trucks, four single axle, plow capable dump trucks and ten tandem axle trucks. The larger tandem axle trucks are vital and fill an important role, but the town currently has a need for, has the needed tandem inventory for the foreseeable future. Maintaining percentage of the fleet with single axle trucks is important for addressing the versatility of the operational needs. During plowing activities, town staff will typically operate from eight to twelve snow plows depending on the severity of event and availability of staff. It is typical for these pieces of equipment to incur maintenance related issues during an event. Maintaining a sufficient, sufficient percentage of necessary resources to perform this function is essential to keeping the roadways passable. This addition will provide additional abilities to sustain snow removal efforts during long duration events. The single axle truck can also be used for residential plowing if and when needed and is more maneuverable and versatile truck that is easier to operate while still possessing sufficient power to operate as a full-size plow. The replacement uni- unit is a tandem axle dump truck slated, slated for replacement in two thousand and eight, I'm sorry. Slated for replacement is a two thousand and eight model year unit. The town's fleet replacement policy again provides, uh, a twelve-year life cycle for this type of equipment. Town staff has evaluated this unit as a prime candidate for the replacement in twenty-one based on the fleet replacement criteria. Of particular note, aside from meeting the life cycle parameters, the life to date maintenance or repair costs for this unit exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Outfitted as, as a swap loader, this unit provides multiple opportunities for deployment for dust mitigation with fluid tank, fluid storage tanks, debris and material hauling, using it as a dump box or flatbed capabilities as examples. I'm gonna move past the financial and budget because you've heard that piece of this. Just want to reiterate that this unit was, uh, awarded through the Colorado Department of Transportation Award. And then the outfit for those vehicles. Um, we can buy the cab and chassis, but unless we outfit it with the appropriate equipment, it really does not do the town any good, uh, and doesn't serve a function. So that's what we're talking about with this next piece. Excellent. This equipment build proposal is for one single axle dump truck used for snow plow and streets maintenance operations and one tandem axle swap loader used for multiple activities in the town roadway maintenance activities. The cabin chassis are being purchased through the Mechanus International from the previous contract. And this purchase is for the required additional equipment purchase and installation on the units. These items are being awarded through the city and county of Denver, um, to perform this work. This contract provides the town with the This contract provides the town with the ability to purchase replacement police vehicles and additional pickup trucks. We are asking and requesting the authorization to proceed with this purchase of multiple vehicles under this contract. These vehicles were identified and approved through the 2021 budget process. This request is for the purchase of eight vehicles from this vendor, and includes seven replacement vehicles and one addition to the fleet. The vehicles included two pickup trucks and six police vehicles. Each of these units were identified through the fleet replacement criteria, and these vehicles will replace existing equipment in the police, streets, and parks divisions. The quotes provided by this vendor are based on a 2020 competitively bid contract with Arapahoe County, and they will include the following: five police interceptors at thirty-nine thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars apiece, one police expedition at forty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, one three-quarter-ton pickup at forty-two thousand one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars, and finally, in the addition to the fleet, is a half-ton pickup truck at thirty-two thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. This contract is for a fully outfitted seventy-foot aerial boom truck. As you can see in these pictures, it is a very large vehicle and specific function in our Parks and Forestry Department. Next slide. The Town of Parker's Maintenance Division is requesting the authorization to proceed with the purchase of this replacement aerial truck. It is a seventy-foot aerial unit mounted on a Class Eight international chassis. The unit originally identified as a ten-year replacement cycle, and the lifetime-to-date maintenance cost for this unit now exceeds fifty-seven thousand dollars. This unit plays a critical function in the Parks and Forestry Divisions. This unit is considered an emergency response-type unit for those divisions. While the deployment of this unit is not on a daily basis, it does provide capacity to address emergency situations in a timely manner. The capability of this type of unit to be rented or an alternative for rental is minimal at best, and from a safety perspective puts our employees at risk because we're not in control of the annual safety inspections that need to be done as well as the maintenance. Our Parks and Forestry Division uses it on a normal operation to address ongoing maintenance needs along trails after high-wind events, heavy snow loads, and other maintenance activities in Parks and Forestry Division. Next slide, please. This one, no picture, no picture is provided. This is for fleet outfit. The replacement and additions to the fleet require a substantial amount of installation of equipment and replacement and placement of logos to make them ready for operation. This contract through a company here that's a fairly local company called Laws is one of very few organizations in the greater front range that provide a full breadth of this type of outfit, which is primarily focused on our police vehicle outfits. So, all the radios, the lighting packages, the emergency response systems that go into those vehicles, there are a handful of companies that do this. This one is through a cooperative bid with Arapahoe County. Next slide, please. And our last contract for this evening is for the replacement of machinery and equipment, including two skid steers, or skidsters, a toolcat seen in the upper right-hand corner and a twenty-four-inch planer seen in the middle lower area of that photo. Next slide, please. Bobcat of the Rockies was awarded a multi-year competitively bid contract through MAPO for the purchase and annual trade-in of skidster units as well as government pricing for other units and attachments. I'm going to talk a little bit about the trade-in process as part of this presentation. The equipment covered in this contract includes the following items: one skidster trade-in in the amount of three thousand seven hundred dollars; the purchase of a skidster in the amount of forty-one thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars thirty cents; a toolcat utility loader in the amount of forty-one thousand five-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and ninety cents; and a twenty-four-inch planer attachment in the amount of seventeen thousand seven-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and fifty-five cents. The town purchased one of the skid steer units in 2018, brand-new. This unit is now on an annual trade-in program. This program allows the town to obtain a brand-new unit each year for a minimal cost. This year in 2021, the amount is three thousand seven hundred dollars. If the town chooses in any subsequent year not to continue as part of that program, we will outright the existing skid steer unit from that year. The second unit that we're buying this year will also be part of that opportunity program for us moving forward, and there are benefits associated with replacing this unit every year. The initial, the annual cost for maintenance is very low during that first year, and what we've seen over time is as these vehicles get older, that maintenance cost drastically increases in subsequent years, especially as it reaches life-cycle age. The second, I'm sorry, the toolcat utility loader is a 2012 unit and had an original life expectancy of twelve years. However, the life-to-date maintenance cost for this unit now exceeds twenty-four thousand dollars, so almost half the cost. The fleet replacement evaluation of this unit places it at a prime candidate for early replacement as the cost continued to, maintenance is anticipated to be of concern. For an example, over the last two years, we have had several repairs each year that exceed two thousand dollars apiece. And finally, the twenty-four-inch planer is an attachment for the skidster units. This device is used by the streets division to perform annual maintenance on roadways. The existing unit was purchased in 2004 and is evaluated annually for replacement. Based on the most recent evaluation of this unit, it is recommended for replacement due to wear and ability to perform as intended, and will require major repairs to bring it back up to operational status. And at that point, at this point, we have arrived to the end of my presentation, and I would like to ask if there's any questions, and also if there's a move to proceed with the purchase of these items.
All right, any questions on anything? Todd, Cheryl, any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In the interest of transparency, this type of presentation, these dollar amounts are very important.
I'm happy to do it.
John Diack, any questions?
No, sir, thank you.
How about Laura, any questions?
Just one question. The resale on the other vehicles being turned in, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Let me give you two examples. One of them that we will be presenting at study session next week and also bringing to council on February first is our street sweeper. We are using a trade-in practice with that unit where the vendor that we're engaged with is providing with a fairly large sum of money for the trade-in. The benefit of that is that we get to reduce our outflow cash expenditure for the town, and that is a huge benefit. Primarily for us, the main way for us to dispose of equipment going out is to use auctioneers. We currently operate with an auctioneer up out of Commerce City who performs auctions monthly and bimonthly for most of the municipalities in the greater Colorado, Denver area.
And can you, at any point in time in your future presentations, let us know how much money that you received back for those resale items just in-
Would be happy to do that.
-future presentations?
Sure. It does range. You know, our large dump trucks, typically we can get over sixteen thousand to thirty thousand dollars for a vehicle like that. Our cop cars, our vehicles that we used to buy, the Crown Vix that are so very popular for so long, they were getting about thirty-five hundred dollars per unit. A lot of taxi cab companies were buying those. They've reduced in value here recently. We're getting probably seventeen hundred to eighteen hundred dollars for those. But in aggregate, I'd be happy to provide you with maybe the last three or four years' worth of revenue that we've generated from those sales.
And that money goes back into the general fund, or it goes back into your specific-
That money goes back into the general fund. I do manage the fleet replacement fund along with finance, where the, each department pays for each vehicle that we purchase on their behalf.
So, thank you very much for the transparency on these matters. I think it's really important for our citizens to understand how the town functions from a perspective of how the town is run from vehicles and maintenance, what money is being expended, and then how the competitive bid process happens, which is a governmental process, and then how the money comes back to the town through the resale of those items. So, thank you very much for your presentation tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. I won't even ask my question. Do we get to drive any of these as councilmembers now, still?
Negative.
All right.
Negative.
All right. Not snowplows, not Zambonis, nothing?
Negative.
Okay, so, well, then, let's get to a motion on all these great new things we're going to purchase, and so we will treat this as another consent calendar, and we will do this with one motion.
I'm, got a brain fart. I, go ahead, Laura. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve all of the contracts in item seven.
Great.
I second.
And Todd second. It's been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. We'll do a vote. Screen build, that's the screen build. Okay, motion passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, for doing that for us. Appreciate it very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
We won't ever miss a study session of doing those again. Item number eight, resolutions. We are looking at resolution number twenty-one dash zero zero six, a resolution to appoint new members and alternates to the Town of Parker Special Licensing Authority and to appoint the chairperson and vice-chairperson. Mr. Maloney, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you approve the resolutions before you at this time, you will reappoint three current members of the Special Licensing Authority for another two-year term, which would be through December thirty-first of 2022. You would also appoint two new alternates, and again, their term is one year, not two years, and that term would end on December thirty-first, 2021. You would also reappoint the current chair, who is David Chung, and you would also reappoint the current vice-chair, which is Natalie Nardi.
Councilmembers, discussion, we'll start with Laura.
Yes, just a question for general public consumption. Are these special licensing authority members, do these members have to live within the town to be appointed?
Yes, they are residents of the town.
Thank you.
John Diack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I talked to Councilmember Pogue and Councilmember Hendricks separately. They both had positive responses to their discussions, so I have no questions, and I fully support this resolution.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Pogue?
Just a quick question. For the vice-chair, you mentioned Natalie Nardi, but I have Kelly.
Kelly, Kelly Nardi.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure my wife remembers.
Did I say Natalie? I always have, I always have a Natalie on the brain tonight.
Lawyers have brain farts, too.
But I have to tell you, this was a phenomenal experience. We have a lot of information shared with council members.
I don't know where I got it. Excellent, excellent.
I just want to echo Councilmember Pogue's earlier comments. Thank you to the staff for putting this together. It went smooth, and it was great to meet the Special Licensing Authority people.
Excellent. So, resolutions do not need a public hearing, so I will entertain a motion?
You typically do take public comment on resolutions.
Okay. So, do we have any public, raising their hands for a public comment?
Mayor, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll go back to our ones, and then if there's nothing else from the council, I just, I do want to say to Councilmember Hendricks, Councilmember Pogue, thank you so much for taking the time to interview these candidates for the special authority. I appreciate it very much, and really doing your diligence to get those in.
A rewarding experience, recommended for all of our members.
Excellent, excellent. And with that, if there's no other comments, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-one hyphen zero zero six, a series of 2021.
Great, is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hefta, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. You should see a vote popping up. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, ordinances. First one is ordinance number one-two dot zero-five dot one-three on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend sections two dot zero-four dot oh-two-zero and two dot zero-four dot zero-three-zero of the Parker Municipal Code concerning elimination, eliminating the ex officio member for the Cultural Scientific Commission. Mr. Maloney, we're back to you.
Sure, Mayor. The town has three commissions. You have the Special Licensing Authority, we just talked about that authority. There's also the Planning Commission, which we'll have conversations about the Planning Commission in the future when we get to reappointments for that commission. And then you have the Cultural and Scientific Commission, and you had a presentation about that commission tonight. Of those three commissions, the Cultural and Scientific Commission is the only one that provides for an ex officio council member, and my understanding is that the Town Council desires to treat its commissions the same and eliminate this position, and then as a part of the elimination of this position of ex officio for a council member, that the commission would actually report back to you on a quarterly basis, annual basis, on, much like what they did tonight, concerning the efforts of that commission.
Excellent. Questions, comments, council? Cheryl, anything?
No, I think it's good enough.
Okay. Councilman Diack?
I have no comment or questions at this time. Again, I'll just restate what I did in the special presentations. I've been, I guess, the, one of the council liaisons for the past eight years, and happy to do so. Again, I'll offer my services to the chair if she feels the need is there to bring me in this transition period, and we'll go from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you very much, and I think some of the changes that we're making as a council are improving the processes of the town and providing greater transparency to the public overall. So, thank you very much to Mr. Maloney and the staff, Town Administrator, for working so hard on making these changes and updating our agenda as well.
Great. And with that, we will go to our first public hearing of the night, and we will open the public hearing at eight-eighteen. Donette, do you see anybody on?
No, we have no public comments at this time.
Okay, we will close the public hearing at eight-eighteen. And council, I don't know if there's any other questions or comments you want to discuss?
Nope.
Okay, then we'll- Is there a second?
I second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. You should see a vote pop up. And the ordinance passes four to zero. Item number nine B is an ordinance number three dot thirty-two, I'm sorry, three dot three-two-four dot two on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend section one-three dash zero-nine dash zero-four-zero of the Parker Municipal Code to add a new paragraph, one-three dot zero-nine dot zero-four-zero, parentheses B, parentheses four, concerning the registration of temporary signs between March twentieth and May first of each calendar year. Mr. Maloney?
So, the purpose of this ordinance is to address temporary signs during the, what I'll call, the election season. Prior to 2015, the town and many municipalities across the country had a sign code which allowed for sign regulation based upon an election season. So, you could specifically call it an election season, you could put in the specific dates, and you could have specific regulations dealing with the placement of election signs. Well, that all changed in 2015 when the US Supreme Court in- Well, that all changed in 2015 in the US Supreme Court in a decision, it was Reed versus Town of Gilbert, struck down that type of regulation, holding that signs had to be content-neutral, so you couldn't have a group of signs that regulated elections. So the Town of Parker changed the sign code to treat election signs like temporary signs. And so the way we dealt with the election season is we indicated between specific dates, and, and again, this would be our November election, so between October 1st and November 15th of each election year, the town would relax the registration requirement for all temporary signs, not just election signs, but for all temporary signs, because again, we had to be content-neutral. And for all those years, we didn't have a special election. Well, now we have a special election, and we want to create the same opportunity for election signs that we do for the November election, for our April 20 election. So again, we would suspend the registration requirement for this special election between the dates of March 20 and May 1st, same period of time as the November election. You'll note that the ordinance talks about this being in, in place for each calendar year. Well, there's a sunset provision in this ordinance, so this ordinance would end by its own terms on June 1st of this year. We intend to deal with this election sign issue as a part of the modernization of Land Development Code, so that's something that we'll ultimately make permanent as, as a part of that code, where we're not sure exactly how we're gonna handle it, but we have to do it again in a, in a manner which does not distinguish one sign type with another sign type. So it has to be same treatment for all temporary signs. So that's the proposal before you this evening.
Excellent. Questions? Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Maloney, on this particular date, June 1st, 2021, why are you going so far out, a whole, you know, extra, over a month to keep those signs up?
Well, it's not that we're keeping the signs up for an additional month. The, the actual dates for suspending the registration ends on May 1st. So June 1st was just another thirty days, essentially random data. I guess we could have said May 2nd or May 15th. We just selected May.
Well, I just think I made it so far in the future for the year.
Thirty days. It's thirty days after the, the signs have to be, the registration requirement ends.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Okay. Councilmember Dyak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no questions at this time.
Excellent. As this is our second ordinance of the night, this will be a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing at 8:23. Do-Net, do we have anyone whose hand is raised to speak on this?
No, we do not, thank you.
Great, then we will close the public hearing at 8:23, and I will entertain any more questions or comments?
I move to approve ordinance number 3.324.2 on second reading.
Now we'll second.
All right, it was moved by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Should see your vote popping up here. And the ordinance passes unanimously, four to zero. With no other business before the Parker Town Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
It was moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Chris, do you need me to do a roll call on this?
Hold on. I got it. It's that guy.
All right, we'll do, we'll just do a roll call on this. Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dyak?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. We adjourned.[1783.42]